Good evening, we'll call to order the Monday, the December the 4th meeting of the Corder Madera Parks and Recreation Commission. Please stand and so we can laugh.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic of our which stands one nation under God, indivisible, benevolent, and just for all.
Rebecca, we need you roll call please.
Commissioner Ellison, here. Commissioner Kennett, here. Commissioner Budiman, here. Commissioner Rose,
Here.
Vice Chair Charlie, even and Chair Miles, here. Thank you.
Alright, before we start with the items on agenda, we'll start with open time for public comment on items not on our agenda. Members of the public will be given three minutes apiece and can either raise a hand or email public comments to publiccomment@tccml.org. If there is no one in the audience here today, Rebecca, do we have any raised hands or email comments?
I am looking at the list of attendees and I am not seeing any raised hands from attendees online. And we do not have any email public comments for open time.
Alright, so at this time we will close public comment. We do not have any presentations tonight. So we're going to move on to the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been previously discussed and do not require any further discussion. Any member of the public as well can make a comment, put up items on the consent calendar for the discussion. We'll start by asking anyone, the commission would like to play any from the consent calendar for discussion. No. Anyone from the public like to comment on the consent calendar?
Thank you, Chair Miles. I'm not seeing anybody's hands for any consent calendar items and we did not see any email public comments.
Great, but that will bring back to the commission for a possible motion. Would anyone like to move to approve the minutes for the October 23rd commission's special meeting?
I'll move to approve those minutes.
Thank you.
One second. Excellent. Rebecca, can we have a vote please?
Commissioner Ellison?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Budiman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Vice Chair Charlie?
Yep.
And Chair Miles?
Yes. Alright, moving on to tonight's business items. Yeah, take it away. First business item, review of possible recommendations of the town council to adopt a resolution formalizing a revised Parks and Recreation fee schedule.
Good evening, everybody. So we're here tonight to talk about the fee schedule. So basically I'm looking for three action items here. One, to formally approve the fee schedules presented. Two, looking for some modifications or three, kind of further discussion of staff of change the fee schedule. The fee schedule moves back annually to commission usually about this time of year before this parent council following month. This year, we did a little bit of revisions of some of the language, which we'll explain in a second. Based in looking for if we think we need potentially increase, decrease, or change or have any areas. In the 24-25 schedule this year, it is just facility based. So a lot of discussions, we looked at other cities and they do not include any program areas also. How much you charge for a picnic area? How much you charge for facility rental? So we took the program fees out because that's a schedule having type of specific programs. These are very much as facility based fees for rentals so that were compared to almost every city that I looked at from anywhere in Marin County, the San Mateo County, they all just look at facilities. So it's really focused on that. Where in previous years we could have some programs in it. The reason we took programs out is because program fees changed when we go to planning. So it's like we're kind of stuck with that fee, doesn't make sense for program changes or adds or subtracts. It's just facility based fee. So I kind of want to go through both the resolution and the attachment first. First in the resolution, first section. It's just obviously wanting to dissolve previous year's resolution at this year's, but it was pretty standard. Second is the definition residence that has not changed from last year, still does that same thing. There's no change at all in that. Section three is the first time you see some change. Our recommendation is basically to put four categories. It would be a resident, a non-resident, a local nonprofit, and commercial. Resident, non-resident, pretty standard, everybody has it. The nonprofit is basically your CYOs, your St. Pats, your Little League, your girl softball. Those are the local nonprofits that get the discounted rate. It's very similar to almost the exact same for the resident group. And the fourth category we added this year was a commercial rate. We are getting questions where people want to make money off a city facility. In other cities we looked at, that is usually the highest rate. Hey, you're coming in and charging a commission. Hey, you're coming in to shoot a quota commercial, whatever else. Your business is making money, we should charge you the highest rate possible for a company. That's the change for this year. Looking at facility wise, a lot of these fees haven't changed since 2014, 2015. There's a large gap, which is, which is, which is a very, very surprising. Is that large gap? Usually we do like it every two years kind of review on the change. But all of these that we're proposing changing here hadn't been changed in 2014, 2015 this year. First one, in looking at indoor facilities, community center.
Can you share that story?
I can, or?
I can, while you're talking.
Yeah.
Green is on, but yes, I do.
Okay, give me a wait a second.
Yeah, if you want to just wait. Oh, there it is.
And there are two problems on the spreadsheet that are about to come up. There's a set of resident, non-resident, local nonprofits, and commercial on the left and then one on the right, but I'm not sure what the difference is of the two.
So the left are our current fees, the right mostly it must have cut off the top itself.
Yeah.
Yeah, so left is proposed, current fees, the right is what we propose to go with.
Okay.
Going down the list for community center, an increase across the board for both residents, non-residents, local nonprofits, and the commercial which you hadn't had before. This is just basically an increase in fees that we have to pay for staff for supplies that, like I said, hadn't touched in 2014 to 2015. Looking at comparison, we're still below or in the middle, everybody else is front and the high end or the low end. And we are busy every weekend renting bar mitzvahs, birthday parties, everything. So I don't think this increase is going to be a huge amount for the percentage. No change in the security deposit, no change in facility tenant fee, and no change in the marquee. So it's the hour per rate used for the rec center for that small increase, percentage increase. Neil Cummins Elementary School Gym and some research talking to Lark's Recreation, they have a commercial rate that we had not had before of $100 per hour. So if someone wanted to run their own private camp out of the gym, there's any space, but maybe those gyms are basic and possible. We would charge them a higher rate, basically, hey, you're making money, you're in private, we should be charging the higher rate. And per the joint agreement, we are supposed to charge the same that Neil, uh, same that Lark's for charges, both Paul and Neil Cummins, versus lining back with them to say we should be charging a higher commercial rate. Are those only two changes for indoor facilities? Outdoor facilities, we looked at raising picnic areas from 30 to 35 for residents, 40 to 45 for non-residents. Local nonprofits from $35 and then a commercial $35. Again, those hadn't been touched since 2015. All those fees go back into adding new benches, putting bar keys back in, and the staff had to cover it. So just a $5 increase for, for the town park picnic areas. Again, security deposit staying the same. And then we do still have four first come, first served picnic areas so that in case someone doesn't want to pay the fees or can't, there are four that are available, their facilities can be able to use if they want to for the per hour rate. Athletic fields, no change at all except for a commercial rate of $200 per hour. For a large field like the east or west, someone's going to run in their own private camp, either soccer, lacrosse, whatever, and they're making money. It makes sense to charge them that commercial rate. Or we had a request for a commercial recently, they wanted to shoot a film commercial there. Hey, let's charge them to the highest rate, we know you can afford it, you're a private entity. It makes sense to raise that commercial rate. Thank you, Burke. Basically, we, we proposed a per hour increase to rent out a whole area. We don't get a lot of these. I mean, honestly, we might give one a year from someone who wants to rent it out. A lot of it's just any groups should use it. But not a huge impact there as well because we don't get a lot of requests for those. But no change to the security deposit. Tennis and pickleball courts have not been changed since before 2014. It's been the same price that entire time to?
$2,090.
$2,090, thank you. So you can go on back further. And those fees directly go to, you know, staff timed sports, new nets, new wind screens are the key costs. They'll need to make the keys, we'll use the keys. So just the, like I said, increase there from 40 to 45 for residents. 50 to 55 for non-residents, and then no commercial rates, we wouldn't let somebody rent out the court. It's only a tennis court fee system, so no commercial rate there. Coke Park, same thing, adding an additional commercial rate if somebody wanted to rent out commercials like the town park. The exact same thing for Coke, so it made sense that there weren't any changes to that. And then the last set of the permit fees, we're making no changes to the permit fee right now for filming or for shooting commercials. We don't get a lot of those and it didn't make sense to add it. Anything of those would have to have a special that permit anyway attached to it, so there's going to be extra fees if they need security or need a parked vehicle, so we need any type of those. There's going to be extra fees on top of it, but that's just the base fee for treating a film thing. Like I've gotten one request the time I've been here, so it's not a, a big thing to shoot film or photo shoots in the park. Section five talks about the town sponsored programs. Again, no changes, all the exact same language, the same groups that we've had in the past who regularly start building at no cost for their events or for their meetings, so there's no change in that. Section four, or section five, the only change is the language, basically saying that staff recommends no change if sports continue to be offering the full-time employees of Lark's or our school district an opportunity to participate in further programs in that facility, the standard rate minus 25%. It used to be language of the old summer playground, it makes sense, we don't do summer playground anymore. We just said, look, for all programs, for town employees, for district employees, but give the 25% rate, minus 20% for all of those activities. We are going to monitor for a year to truly see, I don't think a lot of the staff know about it, so trying to work with education with the district to say, hey, if your teachers are taking after school passes, or teachers are in soccer, or wherever else, you get this discount just to communicate that, get that more out, since we did talk about it last year. We had a few people take us up on it, not very many, but again pushing it more for next year to say, hey, we want to give you a discount if you're a district employee or a staff member. And then I have no revisions to section, the next two sections, six and seven, they're exactly the same as they were last year. And that's basically update for master fee schedules.
Questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Regarding the section five for the employees, does that include their children? So for example, a teacher in our school districts who have children in the area?
Yes.
Signing up for after-school classes? Do they receive that benefit?
That was actually added to the fee schedule last year.
That's what I thought.
Of this question.
I thought so, it did, but just by the wording. I don't know, maybe I misunderstood.
It's a participation to go against the discount.
Yeah. That's the way it should be.
It's a pro your kid, you get it.
Good, good, good. Tim, any estimates on what, how much more revenue we would be bringing in? Than that?
No, I don't. I mean, we are back to, I mean, we don't haven't had a full year of post-COVID rentals, but we are busier than we ever been, we ever been. We have rentals almost every weekend with something going on, so, and that's kicked back up. And that's the biggest real increase and a lot of the stuff for fields or athletics are already given to our youth groups. You get the, starting to get the lower rate, we didn't raise anything for communities, Little League, or girl softball, or burn juniors, or any of those people, those, that rate stayed the same, or stayed, that rate stayed the same. So not going to be a huge increase there.
Okay.
Tim, the, the chart here that was up, this is what's intended to be exhibit A to the resolution, right?
Correct.
I have just three questions on the chart.
Sure.
Start with the one I think I already answered too.
Back up again?
Yeah, do you mind? Thanks a lot, Rebecca. So there's no rate for commercial proposed for Menke Park, is that because there's other permits required?
There is, and a lot of times there's quite a bit of other permits and other fees that would go with adding has a commercial use of that park.
Makes sense. Moving up for town park. And notice that there's a proposed increase for residents, non-residents, and nonprofits, but no increase for commercials. Is there a reason for that?
For in athletic fields or picnic areas?
The picnic areas.
There was never a commercial rate before, so we can add it, it's, we can change, we had kind of, actually it wasn't commercial.
Yeah, I'm misreading it maybe then.
No, you're right. We can add that to match the $5 increase to maybe get $40. If there wasn't a, we don't give very many commercial requests for picnic areas, mostly a resident or normal is low rented, but the other problem is that I think that picnic area, if someone's commercial, it's, it's the amount of people you have in a picnic area is the problem. So someone's a large party, it's like, we're not going to rent you a smaller area to have 100 people there.
I may argue though that the commercial rate should be higher than the non-resident rate.
I, that was going to be my second point then.
Maybe incrementally 50 versus the 45.
And I hear you might be neither here nor there, it's probably not what's happening, but?
But someone might be motivated to say they're commercial, it's a little less than non-resident.
Yeah.
But then maintaining that theme, up to the very top line, so the, the main hall rental fee for the Corder Madera Community Center, I'm assuming that's where we get the most requests, people renting that out more.
We don't get very many commercial requests for it, we get a few, most of them are resident or non-resident who are renting it for a private party, not someone who is making money or selling, charging a commission to come into the park, to come into the facility.
Got it.
Maybe someone that they want to rent and have their own comedy club or their own crafty or something else, we would charge them that commercial rate if they were commercial for profit.
Got it, okay, alright. Yeah, then my, my only thought was just if there was a balance between that, I would, I would love to see the commercial higher and less for residents and non-residents for individuals and local nonprofits, but that's neither here nor there, wouldn't sort of bear out and what we, what would we need to bring in, then that might also not resonate or, or be a helpful suggestion.
That's also, the current proposed rate is very, very good for renting private space anywhere here, so it's already massively discounted.
Given we haven't adjusted these in so many years, does this bring us, where do we sit? You know, if you look at?
We sit the middle.
Okay.
We're still not the highest, we're not above, we sit in the middle.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I would like to revisit this more often, not, I mean, and truly if you were, hadn't reserved, looked at ten years to try to make a figure or something else, but I think we might be somewhere in the middle, very left by two.
Yeah. Any more questions for Tim? Is there someone, we do need to make a vote here, yes, or like? Do you have a public comment? Yes, thank you.
Oh, are you the part where you're taking a public comment?
Yes.
Let me stop sharing. Well, I was going to ask the senior citizen rate for any of these, for renting things, if we do that, or anybody that can afford.
There is not right now.
But there are scholarships. Can you use those towards facility rental?
No, just for rents, it's just for rents.
We do, there is a list on schedule, section four B, you can see the fee is waived for a significant number of organizations in town that are most support, are supporting, making those happen.
Right, Rebecca, any public comments or raised hands?
I'm checking to see if there are any raised hands from online attendees. I'll, I'll give attendees a moment to raise their hands. I'm not, I'm not seeing any raised hands from our online attendees. We did receive one emailed public comment. And I will read it now, it's from Glenda Corning, who says, hello, this is Glenda Corning. I am ready to support a free or sliding scale fee structure for after-school care for our local low-income children. Families whose children qualify for school lunch subsidies should be offered this service to keep their children safe and to strengthen the sense of inclusion and build the bonds of community in our town. The current situation, which left some kids alone and unattended in the park while their peers would care for in the community center, is unconscionable. Many people struggle to make ends meet in our community, we should support them. Joan Vaughn was a great believer that it is the job of this town and Parks and Rec to be inclusive and to help those in need. The benefits of inclusion far exceed the burden of adding a few extra kids to this program. This is the sort of issue that reflects the integrity of a town. We need to keep our kids safe, all our kids. Supervised after-school care should be available to all, please vote to extend free or reduced rate sliding scale services for any child who qualifies for school lunch subsidies without forcing their parents, who are often immigrants, to apply for scholarships. Thank you for your consideration, Glenda Corning. Given that the, the program fees aren't a part of the fee schedule, I probably should have read that during open time, but it had just come in right before the meeting started. So I, I don't have a response or a staff response for that question, other than staff is, is working with some options to, to address this concern. We do have the intention of bringing scholarship program back to this body in January and also the strategic work planned while setting session with council to be held at the end of January as well for direction from council. But the commission will have a chance to weigh in on the scholarship program and the results from the first pilot year of that program and how we wish to expand it going forward. I am seeing one additional raised hand from online attendees. John, I hate all, I will unmute you. Hello, John?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I want to concur with Glenda Corning's comments. We have discussed this issue at various times and I agree with her recommendations and her concerns about this subject and, and fully support any efforts that the town can make to include these children in the program, in the supportive portions of the program.
Thank you, John. I'll be sure to reach out to both you and Glenda when we're bringing this to council. And when the commission discusses it in January.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I am not seeing any additional raised hands. Should have known better than to give myself two screens. But let me just double check the emailed public comments. Okay, then there were no additional emailed public comments for this item.
So we have one commissioner recommendation for a change, which is moving the picnic areas for commercials from $35 to $50. Or any other items we want to discuss with the commission before giving direction to staff to move from $30 to $50. Not good, Tim? Do we need a formal vote on this?
Yes, please.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the proposed fee schedule with the one recommended change fees?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Rebecca, can you follow up with them? Commissioner Ellison?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Budiman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Vice Chair Charlie?
Yes.
And Chair Miles?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Tim, item number two. Review and possible recommendations to town council regarding ordinance to amend to the current park hours and rules regarding bicycle, electric bicycle, and other motorized vehicles in the park. I'm excited about this.
I'll be switched gears now.
But while, while they're switching gears, Rebecca, I know you said that you guys are going to be bringing the issue of and the discussion about scholarships back to us in January?
Yes.
Will that include, because I was hearing that, that comment wasn't just about scholarships, but also about maybe not requiring people to qualify to have scholarships. Will that kind of be folded into the discussion as well? Yes, well, we?
I think it'll be a challenge, I think the free lunch program is pretty much gone. Everybody gets free lunch, so that was not always the benchmark, and that's now gone. So in some ways you want people to pull up, some pay for it to have ownership, and then it's, you don't want to be also insensitive to the community. So it's, yeah, so I think the school uses some other ways besides the free lunch program to identify some of the students, like we use for a scholarship program, we may have the kids who are in certain tiers who are, need the extra care, that's how we kind of get our scholarship for our summer camp. So I think being working with them and say, hey, we're those same students who need that. But again, it's the, still the challenge of getting them to fill out the paperwork and liability and contact in case something happens, or there's that same barrier that we all challenge.
And it's important for the commission to discuss this soon so we can make any changes. And also there's families that don't quite meet that threshold that are also struggling to pay for the childcare. We want to support them as well, so there's families across the board that need support. Absolutely, we need to talk about ways to address that.
Alright, thanks.
Okay, oh, I was thinking, this was the third one, not the back one, it is me. Okay, thank you Chair Miles and commission. This is being brought to you today for consideration. As I stated in the staff report, this section of the municipal code has been noted by our town attorney to have a lot of items that we would like to update in the near future, a lot of outdated language, a lot of outdated regulations. However, in, in the short term, it was brought to our attention from the police chief and many noise complaints that we were receiving in the late summer, early fall, we're having great evening weather and a lot of people in the park staying out late. And residents in nearby homes were calling the police with complaints about noise in the park, the loud amplified music. It was dark or close to dark or just shortly after dark. But our ordinance, the way it's been written since the 1960s, says that no one should be in the park from 12:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So aside from just asking them to?
12:00?
12:00 AM, sorry, 12:00 AM, 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM, sorry. So the police chief asked that we take a look at this during the, the winter so that we have something in place to help them out in, in the spring and summer. Our nearby jurisdictions all have different wording. San Anselmo's is one half hour after sunset to one half hour before sunrise. I explained that correctly. And Lark's Bur is sunset to sunrise. So having something that matches one of those would, would help the CNPA officers, address noise complaints in the park. And then separately, in the spring, we will get our hands in everything in this ordinance and address all of the outdated language that we probably noticed. And also I would like to lift some of the park things out and create a new section that just addresses use and regulations for our parks and community facilities. So we'll separate that out so it's not very several chapters down into something that is just called public conduct. I think that'll make it easier for the public to use, for the police to use, for us to convey to staff. We have differing signage on our tennis courts and on our dog park and on the skate park and on the various forms that Parks and Rec sends out for special event permits and park usage and picnic rentals. So we just want to make everything more uniform, which is going to take more time than simply going in right now and asking to approve an amendment to the municipal code to change the park hours so that it says that people can't be in the park from one half, half hour after sunset to one half hour before sunrise. Our town attorney also recommended we put in an exemption clause to exempt facilities that are lighted like the tennis courts. So in that case, it would be the tennis courts, I'll go in order of how they are in the ordinance. Town park, dog, town park, dog park, the listed operational hours are located on the, from June to September, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and October to May, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Tennis courts at Brunnata should have been left out of that because there are no lights at that court and they will just be the same open hours as the rest of the park facilities. So I actually need to strike that from this draft. Tennis courts at town park, the courts are lighted. Um, tennis courts at town park, the courts are lighted, open hours are one half hour before sunrise until lights are turned off. And public parks has the lights set so that they remain on for evening play from five P M until ten P M. Monday through Saturday, and it has been practiced for many years that the courts are not lighted on Sundays. Um. Town park skate park hours listed are nine A M to dusk. Um, of course, the commission is welcome to bring something back if you have any questions or concerns about any of our current posted hours. Um. I don't know that we can change them with this ordinance, but we can always bring that back in the future to discuss it further as an agenda item for this evening. Um. Separate from, do you want to take questions on just this portion and then go to the bite portion? Yeah, okay, we'll split public comments and questions into two parts.
So did you, the one thing I'd say on um town park skate park, I'd either pick sunset or sunrise, but it says dusk here and so it's like Pick pick thing.
I know, and it's on, it's on the printed signage. Was dusk very
Right, yeah.
I know.
Um, but I I would say like, I'm just kind of looking at like sunset is officially four fifty P M today. Which would mean you have to be out of the park by five twenty.
Yeah.
Which feels a little early. I mean, I know there are not a lot of people at the park, but Um, there have been soccer practices up until last week.
Right.
Five fifteen, it feels like.
It is complaint based.
Yeah, this we, in the summertime, we do get complaints all the time with people partying till eleven o'clock at night. It's pitch black and they're still at the party.
Right.
It's nice and I get it, but it is a difference in the neighbors. So that's why this is all driven by those areas.
Right, I guess what I'm getting at is like the the way this is written is you, no person should be allowed to enter, loiter or remain in each part of the town park Within these hours, but I'm thinking about all those people who like, does that mean I can't go running in the park at six A M? You're not loitering. Yeah, it's very noisy. Um, it's not
It hasn't sounded like from from speaking with the central police authority, the chief, um, his staff. They don't have uh enforcement complaints from Larkspur, San and Somos parks from these same ordinances, so they didn't Have any concerns with those similar ordinances being Mainly meant as uh an enforcement arm To deter unwanted large gatherings.
Okay.
Not not to penalize anyone walking their dog through the park, running through the park.
Okay.
A soccer practice that went a little late, more meant to address unwanted noise and amplified music or boisterous Gatherings.
So it's written so we could enforce it if we wanted to.
It would, someone would need, they're not going to be controlling necessarily. It's it's given
I guess it's
Giving them the teeth to enforce
Yeah, it feels a little
Complaints that they receive from neighbors.
Feels a little uncomfortable because it the the letter of the law means you could enforce it. And so it's leaving up to somebody's discretion to enforce it. So what do we really want to say here? That maybe we want, if it's about large gathering, it's large gatherings or making noise.
When I was trying to decide between the Larkspur model or the San and Somal model, I chose the San and Somal model because that did feel like it granted more leeway. And I think large gathering is hard to, what is large? Is that what it's five people? What if it's five people playing chess, right? Versus They commute very loud. But versus five people with amplified music, right? All the thing we're getting from neighbors revolved around amplified music, drinking
Of course.
Thinking classes.
But the way this is written, somebody could decide they want to Push Somebody, somebody's in my, somebody's in my space. Somebody is running in the park. Yeah, like, I guess it's We, I think we need to be more clear.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, if the ill that we're trying to cure here is amplified, you know, Amplified noise, noise complaints, then we should say that because the reverse
Yeah.
The reverse concerns.
Our ordinance already says no amplified music in the park.
Then I don't, then the, I have two problems with this. One is that it could be applied to anybody. So even though we're hearing right now today, oh, that's not the intention, fine. But the flip side of that is that it's then Applied strategically to only certain types of people. That also bothers me tremendously. Like, we should just be clear. Uh, and say what it is we're trying to stop without having too much embedded discretion in here. That makes me really uncomfortable, like tremendously uncomfortable.
That's exactly where my head went.
Yep.
Um, with
Like, oh, that group, that group.
Certain people being targeted because it's just so broad. And I did the exact same thing. I was like, what time did it sunset? Four fifty? The park by five twenty, it just
So this was, if if what was driving this amendment was updating in certain places, but also I'm hearing that Law enforcement needed some assistance in ordinance to help them.
Ask groups, insist that groups disperse if our laws on the books said that they could be there until midday.
Right, but but our laws say no noise, like there's still a noise, there's some other things, right?
There's no amplified music, correct.
Okay, so that would take
You could still gather in the park.
Okay.
If you run at a certain point, you correct loud unless they got a complaint from somebody.
Don't have a noise ordinance in this town? Whether you can be somewhere or not, there's still a noise ordinance.
There is, but I think people talking could be noise alarms at eleven o'clock, or if they're doing it at sunset, it's not a big deal. But it's also, do we want people running the bikes to the park at night? Do you want people walking the dogs? That's kind of the Figure, and I think it's kind of the discussion we have. We have the whole boundary discussion. It's like, do you want people in the park during certain hours or just, hey, I can point to something if you're causing a mayhem in the park. I can point to, hey, the ordinance said you gotta be out at half hour at sunset instead of, no, no, I'll be off till midnight, then the officer really can't enforce anything.
I guess what I would propose is, you know, the the sunrise sunset as being the boundaries by which Um, the Norris ordinance comes into effect. So if there is a noise complaint Uh, in within those dark hours that that, that it's something written around those, like any noise complaint can be, will be enforced between Half hour before, half hour past.
Is there any reason we couldn't just adjust the hours versus having to do the sunset sunrise?
Yeah, like we do with town, the dog park, like, doesn't it make more sense to say seven P M in the winter months and maybe Nine in the summer, you know? Um, because the sunset thing, like, okay, everybody has to shut down the park at five P M. That doesn't make sense, right? Like It feel like setting an hour. And isn't it, and I feel like, again, like, I don't think it should be an entry exit hour. I think it should be a, you can't make noise in the park at these hours. If you're Quietly doing pushups in a corner, why are we, why do we? Or you could cross there on your bike, right? Or walk that way home with You know, your kid after, after pick up the, yeah, I mean, this is aftercare.
Yeah. Right, like, okay. You have to go all the way around. No, that's nothing. But it's From the police chief to have Hours on the books that matched the other jurisdictions that they patrol and provide service to. So there has to be a way to Draft So other exceptions to this, like in in the list of exemptions. There's, there's probably a way to work with the town attorney to write an additional exemptions possibly.
So is part of the problem that central Marin police want us to line up with the other jurisdictions they police And not have our own regardless of what it is. Regardless of what we decide, they really would prefer we match one of the others that's already set.
But but within those parameters, we can also have exemptions like I listed out for The dog park, the tennis courts, the skate park.
But I think it's important, I'm sorry, I think it's important that they also commented that They're not having these same complaints at the parks in the other jurisdictions. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So I think that there's a lead to follow here a little bit, that, I mean, in terms of Um. Maintaining, managing the complaints versus the occurrences in the parks. If they're having a better experience with some version of this Timeframe where um hours being closed, open and closed, I think it's probably good to follow that lead.
Well, I
Well, the childcare part, um, one of the inclusive of this section, but excluding property of the town, which property has been leased by the town To public or private persons or organizations, except as provided in said lease or leases. I would think that would include The uh modular facilities that the town runs should be aftercare programs in.
Okay, so I'm specifically getting at enter, loiter or remain in the town park. That the that specific set of phrases is being prohibitive. Um, because that is too vague and problematic to the behavior we're trying to curtail. And it's too open to a group of people who are walking slowly back from childcare who don't look like I want them to look and they could be targeted. And that's that, I think it's too open and that's, that's what I struggle with. It's what is the behavior that needs to be happening in the park for us to see it's a problem? And whether we have hours or sunrise sunset, I get it, like when it gets dark out, everybody wants it to be quiet. Um, so I think it's the, in the times that we want to be quiet, we want people to be quiet in the park, so Too much leeway for interpretation, I think it's
That is a great comment, and that that wording is from the nineteen sixties ordinance, so.
It almost like we're looking for like set hours. Like, is it like the six to ten P M makes sense? Like, after ten P M?
Yeah.
Yeah, right? I mean, tennis courts goes at ten, lights go off, maybe at ten o'clock, park should be empty.
Yeah, yeah.
At six A M, you're you're good from the park at night, if you want to, whatever, and then that way, ten o'clock is Perfect bar, kind of. If you're in the park at the ten, guess what? You're gonna complain, PD's gonna come out and say, you need to leave.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe that's more than sunrise sunset. Did buy an hour, six to ten.
Yeah.
Want to go over there and wind jog, work overtime.
Yeah.
I won't drag you, sorry.
I mean, mid, midsummer at eight thirty, the park's packed. Your parents playing with their kids, tossing a ball.
A light, right?
And it's what the park's for. So I mean, I think ten P M is a pretty reasonable
Yeah.
Amount of time.
And then do we have winter hours that we do for the dog park? I mean, I think somewhat the park resolves itself, but I guess it's a question of whether we start to have, I think that there is a, a Are, do we need something that enforces people getting loud? Um, in the park after hours or doing
Do you have a sense of when you are getting those
It's all summer, it's summer.
What hours was it?
Oh, I mean, I did, my, I would have caused a Their party's still going on, the band's still playing, they're they're still drinking.
Were they before ten P M?
No, no, it's it's past that.
Let me make this just really clean. We don't even need all these exceptions that have to do with what, you know, because who knows that which Courts are gonna have lights and aren't in future, like
Yeah.
Just make, you know, times, help law enforcement, but not make it too restrictive. Let's make it clear so it's can be equally applied to everybody And have set hours.
I think going back to when we formed the dog park. I think keeping those hours was an important point for the community who lived closer to the dog park. Um, I could see people taking dogs there in the dark in the winter to exercise them and I I think that if I remember correctly, it was an important point that people wanted Like a certain shutdown time. Rebecca, does that ring a bell?
It does, and I was trying to remember if the commission set that or if the planning commission set the hours, and I think they I think, I couldn't, I couldn't remember.
I don't remember.
But I know it was discussed at both bodies. And it was a, an important um factor to immediate neighbors.
And so the dog park might remain one exception, but I don't know. It would require a little research Rebecca to see where that came from.
Okay, so I'm hearing set hours of six A M to ten P M to have Um, consistency instead of uh and eliminate any vague Unknowns and then no exceptions. Except for the dog park.
Well, and what about the skate park? Because I do think that's a louder, like on the concrete.
Oh, and the skateboard, yes.
I think the skate park too, um, at least, at least for now, right?
And change dusk to sunset.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so skate park hours would remain nine A M to sunset?
Why nine, oh, I guess not, because it's too loud.
And it and it's sunset because there's no lights there?
Correct.
Then that's, then that, that makes sense to me just for the knees and elbows.
Right.
You know, when it's redone, soon there'll be light.
Well, I was gonna say, if there's lighting on that, which would
Yeah, then.
Lighting, I mean, this is moving on beyond, but I guess part of what I think might be nice put in warning is that any facility that is, that has lights. Maybe you couldn't do a blanket statement because if something were to become, new pickleball courts, if those were lit, or The skate park got headlights, which serve a lot of things. Anyway.
Lights, but yeah, lights turn off at ten.
Right, all lights. And the park closes at ten.
Any facility that has lighting will remain open until ten P M.
Or will turn off by ten again. So we'll, we'll turn off by
Well, that's, I mean, isn't that, that's encompassed within the Park is closed from six, from ten P M to six A M.
Yeah, but if you're in consideration, let's say we're discussing Five years on the item, a facility that we want to put in that may have lights. If anyone has any concerns about it going, like, say, what's already in here, they will be off by ten. Yeah.
And sort of protecting the future.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's also clarifying, any facility that does not have lights will close at sunset. I think that those are the
Are we still saying that?
Any facility that doesn't have lights.
Right, so like the skate park should close sometime, yeah.
How do we differentiate facility from park?
Yeah, I'd say it's a park unless a specific area that's lit.
Yeah.
Because that encompasses any, any
But what what we're saying, what you're suggesting actually will say that the skate park is now open from nine A M to ten P M.
Yeah.
No, I was saying, there's no
This one's a
Even that would be a specific exemption.
Unless it became that it had lights.
Right.
It was revision and then
So to encompass, the town park will be open from six A M to ten P M.
And this is all parks.
Parks, all parks.
So we need to make sure that that we're okay with Cove Park and Skokolo Park and Granada Park and all the parks. This isn't just
They're currently open till midnight.
Uh huh.
So, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Are there issues with the other parks or is it mainly Cove?
It's mainly
Mainly Cove.
Mainly town park. It's where we get, um, but there are like, I don't know if Granada, not Granada, what's the Skokolo has lights?
Like, it's not, no, no.
So I think that there are certain parks where you may say, we close at sunset, like, don't be playing on the playground At nine P M, there's no reason for them to be there.
So now that's sort of changing, it's like you want vague than the ten P M to six A M.
Um. But that, I think that that's the, the question of like, are
But this is also something that commission could direct staff to revisit in the spring when we redo this whole ordinance.
Yeah.
If if you wanted to set different hours for different parks. We could do that at that point.
I mean, for right now, the simplest edit is taking the twelve midnight and making it ten, ten P M. That's at least, we've given our law enforcement And it sounds like that's the worst of the time period at eleven, you know, we we tighten it up. And then we ask you guys to look like, did that seem to fix things at least enough? Let's revisit this again, but at least that's like an, an easy change that we can offer. That's not ambiguous and Fairly straightforward. Does that, is that a good stopgap, I think, guys?
Yes, honestly, if the police came out to do enforcement and somebody had amplified music, do they have them turn off the music, even if they
Thank you.
Stay in the park.
Thank you, damn, turn off, but then someone will push and say, I'm coming here at midnight. And they're like, yeah, you're right.
But turn off the music.
Turn off the music.
Sure. And now if we gave them ten P M, I think we'd, we'd at least help bolster that some. What do you guys think about that? Working everybody? And then, you know, we can revisit this.
Are we gonna address the allowed to enter loiter or
Yes, that language. Do you want me to work with the town attorney to find um
Some, something a, a little bit more clear as to the behavior that they're entering, loitering or running.
And that's for when we envision tweaking this more than just the ten
That's just one, I'm here. It's just what it is right now. Is that, is what it is, is allowed to enter or loiter or remain midnight.
We, and I think that's clear. It's ten P M to six A M, like, I know what that means.
But if you uh have issue or concern with the words enter, loiter or remain, you you could always Convert to that. Direct is town staff to work with a specific commission member to If if the commission's decision is to forward this to council for consideration, you could direct staff to work with Yourself, the vice chair, any specific commission member to draft language That would Meet your goals and and change and make it more clear. If you don't have set language, you're considering Meet your goals and, and change and make it more clear, if you don't have set language you're considering for tonight. You can correct a commission member to work with staff on that.
Alright.
Yeah, you started out, we need to talk about is, we're just talking parks, we're not talking communities, or. Part of the community event could go past ten o'clock, it's a lot of that, it says. Any town sponsored event, but if it's a rent or a wedding, they're getting up past that point, or that's something to talk about.
And they also can have amplified music.
Inside, correct, but it's gotta be.
Well, that, that's what, without prior written permission of the Corred Madera, it said Parks and Recreation Commission, but I changed that to Parks and Recreation Director or his or her destiny. I was thinking that to mean rental, but we can make that more clear in here.
And that's a, that's a, because people are going, you know, parties over.
Right, so I, I feel like it is covered, maybe just not as clearly as we would like. Says without prior written permission of the Corred Madera Parks and Recreation Commission. And I would take that to mean the Corred Madera Parks and Recreation Director or his or her destiny. That the, um, in, in that, that staff would be the one that is showing the special event permit. Um, but if, if there's a way to make that more clear, we can include that. Cause yes, we don't want people leaving, um, special events. Get in trouble.
Okay, what was listed, says with the exception of, what was listed there?
Nothing, there was no exception, sorry.
No.
Oh, so the exception of full and then blank, there was nothing there.
Actually, let me, let me look. Okay, I added that, I think I should have made that red, but let me just double check. We'd like to discuss other synonyms that we can use in that.
So our recommendation to staff is to just make the change from twelve hour, twelve midnight to ten P M midnight to six o'clock. That we are closing all parks between ten P M and six A M. And then to revisit in the spring when we have a better read on whether that has addressed the challenges we are having. And the one, with the one exception being the dog park, which has shorter hours.
And the state park and the skate park.
And the skate park, which is nine A M to ten P M.
The dusk is currently.
It's a dusk, but we're gonna move that to ten P M.
I didn't move the sunset, I think ten.
Sunset, until it's lit, I mean, one day it's lit.
Okay.
And this is just our recommendation, then goes to council.
That's correct, they will be interested in the discussion that you had, your recommendation that you made. And I did, um, looking at the website and there for A A, there were no exemptions. And with the exception of, I should have made that for a text.
Okay. So parks, all parks will close ten P M to six A M. With the exception of the dog park, which will be shorter hours depending on the season and the skate park, which will be nine A M to sunset. No other exception. Okay.
So the intention is clear with the skate park, should we set sunset, you know, sort of like a calm. Because the lights go off, like, you know, that.
There are no lights.
Or there are no lights, that's why.
They not lit, and I don't believe, I don't believe that is in, in being considered for renovation of the park.
Okay, alright.
That would be a larger discussion with the immediate neighbors.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Okay.
Rebecca, from a process perspective, would, do we need to vote on that? Or is?
I, I will ask you to vote when we get through the entire discussion or maybe we need to take public comment. I just don't know if it's going to take public comment on this portion of the discussion or wait until we have the bikes on pathways. Yeah.
I think we should break it apart.
Let me look at the participants, um. So for the, the attendees online, we are breaking up the discussion into two parts and we are taking public comment. Now on the park hours. Um, the park hours portion of this item. And I am not seeing any raised hands to discuss this portion of the item. And I will check the public comment email. And we did not receive any emails, public comments on this item.
Alright.
Thanks.
Okay, so to continue this discussion, um, as long as we were also able to make a. Um, an adjustment to this portion of the ordinance. Uh, the central police authority also has difficulty enforcing complaints about bikes in the park. Which have become more prevalent with, um, the increase in use of motorized bikes and motorized scooters. Um, the electric bikes and, and the electric scooters. Uh, we have had a lot of complaints, um, in the summer and the early fall. And I know that this commission is aware of how much time and intensive effort has gone into redoing our fields. And the tighter, um, schedule with the maintenance and the upkeep of the fields. And when the fields are damp and electric bikes with the torque and the revving. It wasn't necessarily people casually riding through it, but some bad actors that were getting in and revving the bikes hard and kicking out dirt and making ruts. Which then dry in, in ruts that our maintenance staff can't level out. So it, it essentially, um, lessen the quality of the playing fields that our staff has tried so. Hard over so many months to improve, um. So we don't, do we have, I don't think we have signage currently, we, we have pathways that go through the park. Um, in several places so that you can get from crisscross the park on, on either paved. Or concrete pathways. But we don't have, um. Any ordinance on the books that directs bicycles, motorized vehicles, motorized, um, or. Motorized scooters to only stay on designated pathways. So we wanted to add something to the bottom of that, that list of, of. Um, in the code of conduct section, again, to be moved into another section when we do this. Um, so what was recommended was that we add, no person shall operate, drive, ride upon or use any. Bicycle, electric bicycle, unicycle or other wheeled vehicle or motorized vehicle in town parks anywhere other than on established paved pathways. Um, this has also been a larger discussion with the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, who will make recommendations to council. Uh, sometime in the early to mid next year. But in the meantime, we wanted to have something so that it could create dedicated signage directing, um. People to ride their bicycles and other motorized vehicles on, uh, pathways. Um, and again, it's another thing that when our code enforcement officer goes out to respond to complaints. There just isn't any signage or any legal foundation for them to deter that behavior.
Um, I have witnessed this behavior and it's not just dangerous for the fields. It's, it's done at times when there are a lot of people and small children around and these bikes are coming fast and they're doing wheelies and it's, um. Not just on the fields, it's also in the basketball court and also on, um, the blacktop, so I don't know if we have any jurisdiction over the blacktop, but that's where it's also happening.
Not on school property.
It's on school property.
But I think that this gets to like, yes, go through the park, great, but please do not use it for tricks and wheelies and. Whatever it is, people are doing, kind of scary. Um, Emily, you're making a lot of notes over there. It's a vein dropping.
No, it's just, I was thinking like, um, strollers.
I got the same thing.
Um, cause what is, we, also I just looked up what is the definition of a vehicle under the California Vehicle Code? Um, because some of this is redundant and confusing to me. Um, but then I'm wondering, is, what is our intention? I always like to start, what is the intention of legal? Is it that, because it might be, and I know I have it myself there, is it maybe we, in, instead of catching this in terms of what we don't do, it's in terms of what is allowed. What is allowed on the grass, right? Walking, right? Um, playing a certain games, like, uh, it just, sometimes it's easier to say what is allowed versus what's not, and sometimes it's easier to say what's not. So do we want people to be able to push their strollers? Um, or those little wheelie carts when they bring their, um, we want that to be allowed across the grass. Okay, so wheel vehicles would seem to prohibit strollers and those little trolleys where people. Bring, you know, their, sell their plates and whatever when they're picnicking, right? So, um, so I just, so what are we, what are we wanting? We're wanting unicycle, bicycles, tricycles and all vehicles?
Motorized.
It's a motorized.
Motorized scooter or.
We've had mopeds in the park.
Totally, it's the motorized, but I think the stroller and the, and the wagons, those are not motor. I've not yet seen them, I'm sure they're coming, but. Are we asking that, those are, those, we, those have to be, it has to be on the grass.
I agree.
To accommodate the community, so it's, but even non-motorized bicycles, I agree, should. Be limited to the, to the pathways. But are the problems with respect to creating damage, the non-motorized bicycles?
Thanks, but the grass is wet.
Right. So, a, and this could be. I, I'm sure this is a hot topic, but, but, um. What, I, I'm curious why we would allow any motorized vehicle in the park?
In the park at all?
Yeah.
They, it's, it's a public pathway, it connects to the bike path. So, um, people use the pathways to get from through the park and behind the school to the multi-use park.
I argue that path was set up before there were electric bikes and scooters. That could go as fast as they can, right? It was. It was not set up for the use it is getting from these motorized vehicles. So do we allow it when they can go on the public sidewalks and the public streets to get to the bike path? But not to get to school, but not to get to school.
And that is something that Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee is looking at over a series of meetings.
So you could say, walk your motorized bike. Through the park to the school, I mean, I'm just, uh, like, this goes back to what do we want and what, what is the behavior that is problematic? Right?
There's always gonna be exceptions and I think we all realize that we're not the only commission or committee that's talking about this.
Yeah.
I mean, police officers are doing this, we're seeing this in shopping centers and everything. I think really the, the big concern here is the elec, the powered vehicles. Now even getting into more granular detail, what they've done now is divided into class one, two and three for electric, electric. Vehicles, they're e-powered bikes that are pedal assist, okay, that's not popping wheelies. But then you've got class two or class three, which had full throttle, and I think that that's the biggest concern, that's probably ninety percent of the biggest issues. Um, I think that you were gonna have issues, uh, I coach multiple soccer teams, half the team, at least half the team. I'd say even more, ride their bikes. Soccer practices aren't always right by the path, they're gonna need to get their stuff there, you can't ask them to lock their bike up where they can't see it. There's bike theft, we're gonna have issues with that. Um, good kids tweeting to school, there's tons, uh, it's, it's, you can't have a kid. Ask a kid to go all the way around the park to Neil Cummins per se, or Cove for that matter, if it has pedal assist. So I think we're gonna have a lot of issues getting really, really granular with this, uh, we kinda need to follow the lead, I think, with the police, with shopping centers and. And really kind of outlaw class two, class three, um, uh, e-powered vehicles in the park. I think that's an easy way to do it, it's probably safer for the kids too as well, we might be overstepping our bounds. Um, I don't know, this, this is more kind of my opinion, trying to incite a conversation here, but.
I mean, I think, I think that there is a, the difference between a parent who's got a preschooler on an electric bike. Coming through the park very responsibly to drop off in the morning and what we saw with people popping wheelies and like. You know, it, it's the kind of behavior that's happening, that's sort of the vehicle and it's kind of, how do we handle the responsibility?
But I, I would encourage, um, the commissioners to keep an eye on the. Bicycle pedestrian advisory committee agendas and I can send them to you when it's on the agenda next for discussion because. They've already had, I believe, two discussions on it and they're working on more discussions before they make a recommendation to council.
Yeah. I mean, I just, I hadn't even, I hadn't even gotten to wheelchairs and motorized ve, wheelchairs, you know, like there's. You know, like, you, all motorized vehicles can't go on there, like now what do we, you know, it said like someone in a motorized wheelchair, so.
Or scooter, yeah.
Right, like, so, um, you know, fraud recycles for certain people, you know, like, I could, this was actually one of the last question we've done question. This is why I'm like. So, like, oh, I could really dork out on this, um, but I, but I. So it's the intention, I'm still, I'm still fixated on the intention and then ways to get at it, right, is it? I frankly, other than the exception of wheelchairs, I like the idea of nothing motorized, I don't. Find your toddler on an electrical, I mean, another way around, I don't know, I'm not.
We also have to be concerned about the enforcement.
Exactly.
We don't have the staff.
Yeah, yeah.
To enforce this as of yet, that would be a discussion for the future.
Do we, I mean, is there something in this ordinance that talks about the prohibition on, um, destruction? Right, like if you're popping wheelies in the grass and spinning out, you're destroying town property, right? But also when your cleats do that, yeah, I mean, I just, I really, this is such a fascinating.
Fascinating topic.
The reality is, this is the direction that bicycles in this community are going.
Yeah.
Particularly because we live in a hilled community, suddenly people who live up in the hills now can actually bike more than drive because of these. Types of vehicle, I agree, they are not always used responsibly and it's typically not the mom with the toddler on the back. But, um, I think by limiting the use in the park by designating that it needs to be on the pathways. That's a, like, step in the right direction to establish some. Control a little bit and, and maybe with the signage that's not gonna say this, really highlight. Like, cycle cautiously because these are all shared paths, right, and that's a lot of, of pedestrians. Yes, we really promote, slow, slow down.
Yeah.
Because no matter what's going on, what time it is, there are little children, there are older people, they're never one in the park, that's what we want and it needs to be safe. Cause I, I worry that, oh, now they're like zipping through the pathways, right, because they have to stay on the, on the asphalt. Which is the right thing, but then they're zipping in and out more than they already do, I mean. We, we walk the same way to school in the morning, but the same path stretch and it's, can be a little wild with the elementary kids on bikes. Was it their motorized?
They're not motorized, right?
Often, they're coming straight across the field, like I see them go right across the soccer field, across, you know, I. I cringe every time that happens, but, um, I think that overall, I think this is a step in the right direction. I agree about the, um, wheels, the wheeled vehicle would.
Too broad.
Right, but the motorized vehicle, less motorized wheelchairs or some, some verbiage to identify. That helps disabled or something of that degree.
Device.
Right.
It would be, it would be, uh.
Mobility assistance.
Yeah.
Are we having a lot of problem with non-motorized bicycles ripping up grass, that's less, right?
It's less, I mean, obviously.
It's less, but then you also have the scrutiny of, well, what kind of bike is it when somebody?
Or something, I didn't have my pedal assist on, but I did like, I think it's better for, no bikes shouldn't be on the grass. We work too hard for this grass or ridden on the grass, right, so that the kids can walk their bikes.
Sure, sure. But they will get off their bikes and wind it up along with their little sus bikes next to the kids.
Riding on the grass.
Take their bikes to practice all the time.
Operate, drive or ride upon.
Yeah. We can also work with the CMFC to educate the coaches and the parents on. What the expected, they're in the, in the scene for.
Well, I think also maybe talking to the school about sending out and.
sending out in, in the parent briefings that we get, like, this is a problem. The ordinance is being changed, please educate your children to stay on the paths. You know, the community needs to be educated with the school.
It's interesting, because we, you know, we have all this promotion of, of walk and roll, we want you to ride, make sure you, and it's fair to say, ride safely and ride wisely, and these are the rules, so that education could, I think, go hand in hand.
I could see ride safely and ride wisely on a sticker. We can make T-shirts.
So, it's, so, okay, and intentions are, I mean, things that I think we can agree on are yielding to pedestrians, right, biking safely, speed limit, right? Like, all of those maybe seem across the board things that, that we can get on board with. Then this idea of staying on the path, then it's crafting who stays on the path, right? So, it's motorized vehicles with the exception of wheelchairs, but then, and also the addition of all cycles, bicycles, tricycles, unicycles, right? That's where it starts to now, we got, then we have a lot of exceptions, because it's not just wheeled, right, because wheeled would be strollers, wagons, wheelchairs as well.
Yeah, so.
So is it specifically motorized vehicles with the exception of any motorized wheelchair? And then plus all forms of cycles?
Yeah, please walk your bike.
Mm-hmm, is that what, is that what we wanted? Get all that?
Grass, you can ride your bike, you can ride responsibly on the paths in just about any vehicle that you've got, right, ride responsibly in the path, on the grass, everything was walked.
Everything is walked, because you may have a.
Whatever, whatever real thing you have must be pushed by foot. Unless you're on a.
That's actually easiest, though.
Yeah.
Given those parameters, um, would a commissioner like to work with me and the town attorney to fine tune this language?
Thanks, Emily.
Okay.
Um, now we need public comment section and then consideration wrap up. See where you want to go with this and possible direction to bring it to council at the next week, the next available.
Okay.
Which will be December nineteenth.
Do we have any public comments?
We'll let us see. Um, looking for raised hands from Patty. And I am seeing a raised hand, um, from one of the online attendees, so I will unmute Patty. Hello, Patty?
Hi, Rebecca, thank you. Um, I wanted to recommend that if the commissioners had not, uh, yet watched the video and maybe staffed too of the last B-PAC committee, it would be a wonderful idea, because they had a very thoughtful discussion about uh, pedestrians and the dangers of the, um, uh, e-bikes and all that, it went on for quite some time, but it, it sounded very similar to the things that you're grappling with, so it would be a great idea for you to watch that. Also, I went to the DMV because I thought, oh, I wonder what the bicycle rules are, and there is no booklet for bicycles. So there absolutely should be, I don't know how people ever learn how to ride a bicycle legally without any kind of guidebook. So, that's nothing you're gonna take on, but it should be out there, thanks.
Yeah.
I don't think they're defined a vehicle.
Yeah, and inhabit that, I think that there actually are, um, potentially different rules for motorized scooters versus motorized bikes in terms of bike using apartments and everything, so, um, that is definitely not something we have to solve, but.
But we do need something at least codified in municipalhood in order to move forward with signage.
Okay.
To put up, um, so we, we can, the, the commission can choose to um, move forward with this recommended language and the suggested changes to that language. Um, see how it progresses over the next few months, see what the conversations are that come out, and the recommendations that come out of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. And then in the spring, we can always bring back another, when we do bring back other organs, we can bring back additional changes or corrections or additions. Um, based on what comes out of the B-PAC discussions and the recommendations to council as well.
Okay, so we have two things we need to vote on, yes? Correct, that's part of this, um, the first one is the park hours. Ten P M to six A F M with the two exceptions being dog park and skate park. And then, um, the company, should we vote on these separately or one altogether?
You know, after, based on this discussion, I, I think we should vote on it separately, it wasn't, uh, on the agenda that way, but I think it makes it more clear.
Okay.
For my notes.
Great, so do we have a motion to approve the recommendation for park hours as stated, as discussed? Ten to six, with the two exceptions, so, thank you, do we have a second? Excellent, um, Rebecca, can you give a vote, please?
Commissioner Allison?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Budiman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Vice Chair Charlie?
Yes.
And Chair Miles?
Yes. Moving on to our second item, we have recommendations to staff to refine um, the language to capture the intent of vehicles on the path, walked items on the grass, um, with the exception of assist vehicles, motorized assist vehicles. Um, that, with possibility of Vice Chair Charlie working with staff to continue to refine that.
To refine the language.
To refine the language, we're bringing it to council, that was very long, do I have a motion for this item related to bicycles? So, do I have a second? Yes. Can we get a vote, please, Rebecca?
Commissioner Allison?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Budiman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Vice Chair Charlie?
Yes.
And Chair Miles?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion has been passed, motion passed. Um, based on the direction of the commission, um, staff will refine the, um, the ordinance amendments to align with the commission's direction and work with Vice Chair Charlie on the wording, and it should be on the agenda for the December nineteenth council meeting. Um, I would encourage anyone interested to attend that meeting virtually, I know we already have one, um, commissioner assigned to attend that meeting, but if you wanted to speak during open time about your thoughts on the amendments or anything else that was raised, um, that you would like other bodies or the council to look into, um, would be a good time to raise those.
And can we also, Tim asked that you keep us updated on this, like, is this enough to solve or help decrease the damage done to the fields and y- you know, or do we need to do more, I would, I would like to just kind of keep an eye on it, as this is entirely, you know, it's, it's a new kind of era we're entering here with all of these.
First big test will be in the spring when they have the soccer camps and spring clinics, and it would really just hinge on working with the school, like we suggested, and the perimeter football club to get um, educational material out to parents and coaches and and spread the word, really.
One big other test can be seasonal, if we get rain, also, yes, we're gonna be there, in the summertime, some bikes did, there's probably not a lot of damage done, but if we get it on the, wherever calling the, I have a spare river come through, and then people start riding their bikes through, then that's different.
We had a rainy season that lasted an exceptionally long period this year, so we had soft field conditions in the early summer, midsummer.
It would be, that's why, it would be good later in the season after the rain, or even if you know, midwinter and it's raining and the fields are really wet and soggy, but this is still a problem, what else can we do?
Maybe there needs to be some cross uh, information shared between B-PAC and Parks and Recreation Commission, because a lot of this goes hand in hand. That's not something we've had the opportunity to do in the past, but it would be good to get, um, this commission up to speed with the work of, of that committee as well.
Thank you. Moving on to business item number five, C. To update the commission on Parks and Recreation Facilities Master Plan Process Through Which Potential Projects Were Identified, Reviewed, and Elevated out of the PRMP, and Requests for Support or Potential Standalone People Ball Courts Project in Town Park Utilizing Funding Allocated FY twenty-three, twenty-four for Parks Related Actions.
You're hitting the hot topic, that's just. All right, so I'm gonna share my screen. Sorry, um, all right, so, uh, kind of two parts here, one is kind of a process how uh, projects will be elevated, and the second is kind of a pickleball discussion at Town Park, so we're gonna start with kind of a, um, um, so kind of, just to review where we came and where we've gone for the Park Master Plan process, obviously from need to set into the council approving it in the November meeting. Um, all the steps along we've kind of done. Um, in October, we went to council, kind of with that final draft, hey, to council, are we okay with this, here's all the work they did. Overall, very supportive and said, okay, it's great, but how are you gonna get the projects to us, which is what we kind of talked about on the commission level. Um, we came back to council again in November, kind of said, hey, the master plan looks good, um, go ahead and approve it. How do we get these projects basically to the level where commission has some good input and council has some good direction going forward? Kind of made this nice little flow chart of, hey, in the fall, uh, Parks and Rec will kind of review the master plan, kind of figure out what are items we need to work on. January, February, Town Council, treaty planning and workshop plan would basically say, hey, commissions give these ideas, what can we accomplish? What's realistic, both staff by the financializing budgeting and what can be done? Moving over to spring to work with budget, uh, and also with admin and finance, say, okay, hey, these are great projects, how to fund them? Going to June for budget capital improvement approval, and then project implementation, which obviously could take a short time or a long time going forward. Um, what we presented to council was kind of a snapshot of basically what we're gonna accomplish this year of the four hundred thousand dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four allocation. Couple right off the back, uh, some interesting deficiencies, the ADA issues in the park facilities, approximately forty-five thousand already spent. Another, obviously, chunk of money spent, this fiscal year fixed some of those deficiencies that came on master plan, said, hey, these are things that are low line proof. They gotta be fixed, let's get them done, make sure. Second was enhanced field maintenance, um, we've already spent fifteen thousand acres so far on the improvements, obviously allocating more money to keep the fields um, ready for the next spring, obviously, we're in a little field closure right now, kind of working on those improvements, and that money set aside. Uh, we spent five thousand on improvements to the town park softball and baseball field, basically, there was a horrible lip, set, set up, went out, fixed it, spent some money there. Uh, forty-five thousand on a new grease interceptor and commercial dishwasher, the interceptor is in, in place, dishwasher is coming. Uh, the Parks and Rec, uh, communicated with other construction all last week. Um, but basically, that's part of what's been spent on, and then lastly, the tree, replanting for pick and carry, people that were with us who came down, they'll say, hey, we need some more shade, bring back, um, some more shade and some more trees back there. Uh, park improvements, um, pickleball strategy Granada, which will go hand in hand with the discussion of the town park. Uh, second is new pickleball courts at town park, and then the last is fencing at skate park refurbishment going forward. Um, so in the process, um, basically, normally we would do this in the summer meeting, we're a little behind because of everything else, we're gonna do it in the January meeting, say, okay, what projects do we want to elevate to that action plan meeting? What, what do we think that, look at the master plan that we've accomplished this year, we want to either roll on an extra and do more, or do new projects coming forward? But basically, working as a liaison between Parks and Recreation Commission, myself, and obviously Town Council to figure out what we can accomplish um, in that kind of flow chart, um, and then basically budgeting accordingly to accomplish those goals, realizing that if there's a bigger project, it may take more than the four or five minutes we've allocated for, and it may take several years, or maybe, hey, it's, we've decided, hey, we really wanna redo the east field, it's gonna cost us two points, I don't know, whatever it is, but to basically working with commission, say, okay, these are the projects we want, bring it back to council, having that kind of action plan meeting, and then bring it back to commission after that. Um, we are gonna tackle this in January, so January meeting's looking kind of beefy, uh. Um, so basically, in January, I will come back with basically the discussion with the commission on what project we want to elevate to that next level. Which of these things do we say, hey, if I want to go, I will probably, um, you know, things I get advisory committee to kind of meet, say, hey, here's some of the things, let's have an early discussion of what realistic things we can bring back, what things we can accomplish, um, do you want us to put this in two, or is it the same kind of discussion, do you, for jump of the pickleball?
I think it all goes hand in hand.
Okay. So the second part is obviously from the masterpiece schedule, the master, from the facilities master plan, sorry. Pickleball is a high priority, it's came out of all the surveys, oh, I'm sorry, yes. Thank you, sorry, um, it is definitely been a, a, a high priority in the level of basketball, that the Granada Parks temporary strengthening, it's a permanent pickleball courts. Um, and one of the locations was identified at Town Park. Uh, what we're asking basically is supportive, basically doing some work to come back with some designs and some ideas, and being outreach of do people really want pickleball at Town Park? We all know it's very popular right now, of course they have, but they really want a true pickleball player, maybe a pickleball player, true, okay, they really want to designate a course. And there's an opportunity that the ball wall doesn't get a lot of use, it's used, I've seen it for lacrosse practice, I've seen it for pickleball players warming up. But to come back and just do some hours, say, do, do the community presidents really want, uh, pickleball courts there, and what can we do? Can we, to, for, not saying we're doing it at one, but just saying, do some work and some outreach and say, hey, what near-term plan can we do with the money that's left over to put some permanent pickleball courts there? Um, so, basically looking for support from commission to kind of do some work, and to come back in January and say, hey, here's some ideas, do some hours to the community and say, this is an opportunity, what are our thoughts, what are people's thoughts and opinions? And then hopefully get that done in this year's fiscal year budget, so that it's money spent, it's fiscal year of the amazing money we have set aside for these couple of projects.
This has been identified as not only a high priority or a high need in, and on the the matrix, it also has been identified by our Public Works Department as, uh, something staff can handle and, um, after engaging in public outreach and design could build fairly quickly, um, within either this current fiscal year or just shortly thereafter, so, um.
And then in house, our staff would, would do it.
It is that ability to do it only in that space where the wall wall exists today, or would we be talking about this versus Granada, I know is another place we talked about putting pickleball courts.
Um, right now, it's just Town Park, I think the amount of work to be done at Granada cannot be done with staff in house, there's some other grading, other stuff had to be done with those issues with the drainage, uphill and everything else.
And, uh, with our lease agreement, it would have to also go through our middle school district's board.
Got it, it's not a cross, and then, so, really, it's the, the, the opportunist, the opportunity here is specifically that space in Town Park because of what's currently there, and the fact that it's already flat and has driving and run on. Has there been any opportunity or any public notice about that?
So, it would, it would be discussed in the January meeting, so if you give me the, go ahead and forward to explore that, I would then notice everybody for the January meeting.
With there, I know you're gonna speak about this in your director update, but the most recent, um, skate park outreach meeting.
Yeah.
I know our plan was to first to engage the Scotty La Foundation for the current footprint, but there was some discussion of would we expand that, and I think that that would probably be the space in which expansion would be considered.
Uh, if we didn't expansion, yes, it would be part of the ball, would be the area they would like to expand to, because it's already flat, a lot of everything else.
Was there a discussion of expansion at that most recent community meeting?
There was, yes, yeah.
So it's really one or the other?
Uh, well, I think it depends on what we end up doing, so if it's, I, I don't know how many, I think you fit two courts on pickleball courts that were the ball walls right there. The others, there are also additional challenges to expand skate park with some drainage, but things that have to be worked out, and it's I think also to be outreach, like, does the committee want a skate park that's got bigger, or they want to stay on the same footprint? Um, but I think it's a look at that whole area in general, like, what can people hear that benefits everybody, so I think it would be general discussion of, hey, we're expanding this area, what are your thoughts? Go to the Scotty La Foundation Skate Park is high, because everyone's been very passionate about it, but I know pickleball players are just passionate about their courts, which I, which I fully understand.
Well, there was some notice to the community, and that if that area was listed as a potential site for pickleball courts in the master plan process and all of the. Oh, there was some notice to the community and that if that area was listed as a potential site for pickleball courts in the master plan process and all of those documents that were reflected that, so if any um neighboring residents did see that they would have received some general notice, but they would have had to report. So to do more specific notice, it would need to do that for the January meeting.
So your ask today, Tim, is not should we go with the couple of courts there, is should we explore?
Should stop to explore, correct.
Um what else might we spend that money on? That feasibly, like what what didn't make the list, or is this kind of the only item of that size and feasibility?
I think it was the item we were kind of looking at, that was very high enough on that priority list. Uh that's something we could accomplish in house.
In that time period.
And then we are, people are strapping their own pickleball courts on on down park and people see that they put their duct tape down and make their own lines, even though Bobo was already there, so I know the demand's there. Um and every neighbor today I talk to is always like, I need building your own, so I can sense what might be, but it's there, it would think it would have probably died, although it's gone even more, I think it's really taken off.
I think there is something important, something to be said about all this, for years of this master plan. All the steps to actually have a big ticket, like quickly be able to be accomplished. Um I'm not saying that this is purpose, this is, I don't, I want to see what you come up with. But I think there's a lot of value in that to show that we're not just talking, that we're actually acting and delivering, and it was I know high on the, so I I encourage it to be discussed. Project wise, this is the highest scoring project that staff could address in this short timeframe. Otherwise, if you were asking what else funding might be used for, it would likely just be to a- address more deficiencies. Okay, um which does not have the wow factor.
There's a shiny bubble, okay.
But there will be lots of projects um that you will have the opportunity to discuss either January meeting.
Do funds roll over if they're not used?
Yes. Like if if this, the council um allocated that amount of funding to address immediate needs in this current fiscal year out of the master plan. If the project is identified and can't be completed by the end of fiscal year, we would still retain that that funding to continue with that project.
But if the project is not identified?
We want the the funds, it would be, it would go to a different, you know, go to address the
Well, I think so, I raised a good point about um the potential expansion of the skateboard park. And it is particularly sort of on mind because as as we're gonna be trying to curtail some of the biking. Um part of the expansion that was discussed was to allow potential biking and and bike tricks and whatnot in the skate park, if that was even possible. So um I'm in favor of you exploring the the direction you guys exploring um the pickleball courts, but want to just make sure that we have that in the back of our minds as well, if it's an either or, or there's a, you know, some pickleball, but leaving that space available in case that's expansion is a possibility or whatnot. So just keeping that as something that you let us know as well.
Yeah, I'd say the big part of 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 the reach out is identifying where the big resistance, if there is any that that's gonna come up. Um I've seen this in a number of cases with the Tiburon Peninsula Club, the Bay Club, Ross Valley, where they make a lot of headway, this is, these are private clubs, not even public, and they hit a lot of resistance. But I think with that town park, it's actually a very good location. It doesn't have immediate neighbors, but you never know when you're gonna come across the people that are really gonna put their foot down. So I think the demand is there, it's high on the matrix, it's time to reach out and find out who's really gonna have issues with it if it does happen there.
Although it's already happening, yeah, at the court right next door.
Yeah, that's true, it is.
And I presume maybe tennis players would like this, this, the tennis courts could be freed up.
Yeah, and you can also argue in building a pickleball court, there's certain fencing, barricading that has noise reduction. So you could also argue it's gonna be a lot better by having dedicated pickleball courts as opposed to the existing uh tennis courts.
It sounds like we're all in favor of
Yes, do we have any public comment?
Let us see. How many raised hands? I am not seeing any raised hands from any online attendees at this time, and I will check public comment email. And I'm not seeing any email public comment for this item.
Excellent. So bringing it back to the commission for a vote, um vote is to direct staff to officially explore a pickleball court in town park where the ball wall is. Do I have a motion? I'll move. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Excellent.
Commissioner Ellison?
Yes.
Commissioner Cannon?
Yes.
Commissioner Muddiman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Vice Chair Charlie?
Yes.
And Chair Mas?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes.
And with that, we're moving on to staff updates.
Alright, uh first, let's start off. My acting title is gone. I'm only your director. Sorry, I'm just your back third, sorry. Um that was a floor of the last couple.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't say that at the top.
Sorry. Um let's start with the uh copy of the winter spring activity guys in front of you, um in plenty of all the residents. Uh we wanted the new printer, we are super happy, they do a great job. They turned around in two days, super fast, I'm like, this is amazing. So we are gonna keep them at their quality, it's just it was a pass one, so we are very happy. Um second up, Scotty La Design Reach Out Week Meeting recap was on November fifteenth. They had about twenty to twenty five people show up, was great. They gave them a blank sheet of papers, they draw what you want. Like if you could have anything you want, I don't care if you go up, down, date, whatever, draw what you want. So that was great. So there were some uh probably youth and adults who got kind of big, hey, I'd love to see uh Calver State Parks did a big job kind of running the meeting and we can kind of just get a blank canvas, what would you do? So um we have a recap coming in in about two weeks. Kind of what came out, meaning of what ideas and what elements they'd like to do. Um and like came about the, obviously the expansion over the pickleball wall, which will come up. Um Turner Art Invitational is going on right now with the opening on December second. We had about fifty pieces of art displayed. Uh there tried about a hundred people who attended. Um it is also time to display the unique art that is going into the Canad Bins project. That was due, you know, coming to submit their artwork. Um and it's displayed up. Uh we have try to suit the Can by. Um they will go up in the new year or the new bins, uh and then it is up for two weeks. And it closed in December fourteenth, uh five to seven P M. A junior house decorating is December sixteenth, uh probably have about twenty two people totally signed up, we take about forty total. Uh always one of our more popular events. Uh Letters to Santa, deadline is this Friday. If you want to write a letter, we have a mailbox and my staff um writes back from Santa, it's a great program. Uh scholarship program, we're gonna be asking for additional funding in the midyear budget, we'll be in January and come back with kind of a changes and a general summary. Um the need is definitely increased. We get emails and requests every day for people who need the childcare and who did homeschool program. So definitely gotta go back and ask for more funding to overcome some of those costs. Uh last two things is Turkey Trot, um was a great event, it was a beautiful day Thanksgiving morning. We had about five hundred people out there. Uh it was really, really popular. Um we didn't expect that many people and it was gorgeous and we had dogs, we had people on bikes, we had, we had a great event, so they really enjoyed it. Uh and then already planning, again, talk about next year's. Last thing I have is just a sad note, um many of you know, may know Joan Vaughn who passed away, it was Thanksgiving, was a longtime Parker Rec Commissioner. Um she was ninety two, ninety three? Ninety whatever else, she was um a spitfire, a passionate spitfire who was very passionate about Parker Rec, um and truly be missed. Uh they're gonna have a service for her saint pass, the reception of the recreation center sometime in January. She's kind of coming in from out of state, but we're gonna um help her out and uh hold the reception for her there and um it should be a, you know, she was well known in the community for a long, long time. Yeah, yeah, we'll definitely miss, but she uh she was very instrumental in getting the foundation to donate money for a scholarship fund and was at all women's club meetings, everything else. And she was, and when I talked to her, I sat down, so I was like twice as tall as she was and she was always great and it's kind of like, hey, let me tell you about the history of this, let me tell you, and she was great. Um and uh really she bought it by surprise, but uh her daughter said they were out doing stuff that I didn't see before and then just, so it was sort of sad, but yeah. That is all of my director.
Thank you, Tim. Wish I could add anything from the meetings, I don't have to leave meetings, so much. Okay, um thankfully, Tim reviewed most of it. So there was a one meeting in November, on November seventh. Um honestly, the majority of the meeting was regarding um Parks and Rec related issues. First thing was there was a review of the Soma Aquatics Program that I know that we don't, we're involved with it, we don't really dictate it, but just gonna share a few highlights from it. So this is the acts, the pool access at Redwood. Um through the summer program, they offered lap swim, uh swim classes, open swim, aqua aerobics. So they have about thirteen hundred participants, about eighty two percent from Cort Madera. Others were a smattering of local towns, um sixty percent adults, thirty percent youth, about eleven percent seniors. That adds up to one hundred and one percent, I just realized, there's something in there. Um they, what was really um great to hear is there was, a lot of the swim classes were directed towards low income families and they, the gentleman giving the presentation commented on they had several children coming in for classes and then quickly realized that their parents did not know how to swim, and so they they sort of pivoted and provided some lessons for the adults as well, which is great for competence and safety and obviously. So I think it's a really cool program and great to hear the success of it. They um did comment that they, the Redwood High School pool is meant to be resurfaced this coming spring, so they may be looking for another location for next year. But anyway, so there was that. Secondly, um Tim presented the response to the initial presentation about the master plan and went through the process in which he already reviewed with us today. Um only thing to be noted that I will add is interestingly, the commission, the town council had to do the presentation in two parts because one of the council members lives backing up to the Cove Park, so it was the Cove Park and he accused himself and then all the others minus the Cove Park. So if you've seen anything, that's why, you can see it through the minutes. Um the only last thing, uh two public comments were I thought interesting for us, for feedback, one was regarding Higgins Landing and one of the gentlemen said, I think we should just abandon this idea. This is not a usable park, there there's no parking. And I think we've come across that, but hearing the community comment on that. Um and this was Bob Bundy, who's involved with the community foundation. He also was pushing for Menke Park to be a real focus for improvements and offered a partnership with the community foundation who could help drive private donations and funding like we've done with other projects in the town to really revamp Nike Park in in sort of one fell swoop versus piecemeal as we consider projects moving forward. And then the only other comment to share was um from Clark Miller from the uh soccer, football club, soccer club. thanking us for the efforts, for the field improvements, that they were very pleased with, they've said, but that overall they're still advocating for natural turf for the long term. I think that was all that I covered. Thank you, that was a fun. You're welcome. Are there any, uh the executive advisory committee did not meet, are there any individual commissioner updates?
Oh, we went to the Thanksgiving.
No, volunteer dinner.
Volunteer dinner, and that was really nice. That was really nice.
About eighty five people, all the vaults here in town and catered dinner.
It was fun.
You know, I actually will add, what, this is a uh update, I had a uh some comments shared with me from a member of the community regarding the skate park, and that's why I was sort of in top of my head today, but I just want to really um speak to the comments in whole. There were two recommendations provided by this quarter manor resident who's, who has um actually as an adult, uses the skate park and has among different skate parks around the community or around the county and has younger family members who do. And the two recommendations, which I just hadn't thought of, so I wanted to share was, one, the idea of the expansion he suggested was that it would allow for like a younger children's area and an older area, um which I thought was really smart versus, I I guess when I thought expansion, I was thinking bigger or more similar level, but actually the leveled um process of school. The second thing that he had recommended was, was lighting, because this is something that we're, we're constantly trying to engage our adolescents, teenagers, and this is something that often that's the community that's using this and giving them the opportunity to engage in a sport that is staying out of trouble and engaging in this potentially later in the day, just an idea. And that there are other skate parks in the county that do have lights. Um and that there's already lights right next door, so not terrible, more uh light pollution. Just sharing community thoughts. I did have one individual tell me that they actually use Higgins Landing, not realizing Higgins Landing was a natural park to get to the creek. But that's the first one, right? So they stumbled upon like, did you know you could get in that way? And then did you know that it's actually okay?
Like they, they swim in or they go?
On a paddleboard. Where do they? Yeah, they're parked at Redwood and carried across, they're like, oh, I just did this thing. And I was like, wow, that's actually a thing that people do, I didn't could do, I didn't know people about that. So we we found one. There you go, um we will not abandon. Try completely abandoned, but it's like, it could be nicer. Yes, it could be. Um any other individual updates? Alright, that takes us to routine and other matters. Um but there is a typo on December today, it's December the fourth, not December the second.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Um wait, that's
For next year.
Oh, it's for next year, just kidding, today's December the fourth, not December the second. There is not a typo. Um do uh commission may decide to reschedule an item uh as public hearing, are there any potential or future items that we need to discuss and add to the agenda?
I think January is gonna be
pretty solid already. You don't have anything else. Um the only ad hoc committee assignment is Emily helping with um motorized vehicle language. Um and as for you, no. And town council meeting, I am on for paying attention to the December meetings.
So tomorrow.
Tomorrow. So our next regularly scheduled meeting for Parks and Rec Commission is January the twenty second, twenty twenty four.
Wow.
And with that, we will
Wow.
Right, um adjourn this meeting in honor of Joanne Vaughn. Jo Vaughn.